We are still under the indoor gathering rules, so we are all virtual for the public. Board members present tonight or this afternoon are Maryline Balance, our vice chair, Harvey Hess, Frank Hester, Margaret Lawler, Joe Talber, and David Twitty. Also present, Dr. John Farley, Associate Superintendent Sandy Kinsel, Dr. Keith Parker, Johanna Parker, Ashley McBride, Georgia Sellers, Maureen Welch, and Brian Shaw, our attorney, joining us by phone. The Dare County Board of Education has called this special emergency meeting in order for Dr. Farley to update the board on the continuing impact of COVID-19 in our schools. Dr. Farley is going to present information to us, and we have many issues to consider. I am going to ask up front that all board members engage in a thoughtful discussion after his presentation so that we can look at every aspect of what he has presented and discuss all the options that are there before we reach any decision. So I would appreciate if we could do that after the presentation. So, Dr. Farley, we're going to ask you to go ahead and start with your presentation and the update.
Thank you, Ms. Bassnight. I appreciate the board gathering today, and I want to thank all those who are listening in on our YouTube feed. So I've got a presentation, as Ms. Bassnight said, I'm going to go through at the board's request, and I will start with a clicker that's not moving. Oh, okay. There we go. Thank you. So, as a brief overview, as you know, Dare County Schools reopened for instruction on October 26th. We've been running three programs. Pre-K5 has come back in the traditional setting with a staggered entry. Grades three through five started the first week, and then students in grades pre-K2 staggered entry the second week of school. We've had a 6-12 hybrid, as you know, where students are coming in two days a week for face-to-face instruction, three days are remote, and then we have staffed a K-12 virtual school. By all accounts, we had a very successful opening week with implementation of necessary protocols, lots of training of students, and some new ways that we come to school and the structures that we've put in place. And I put the smooth opening, thank all of our administrators and our teachers for all the advanced work that we did in planning so that we could open successfully and implement all these safety protocols. So my hats are off to our staff members and our leaders. We have had different delivery in our school nutrition program, which has included a feeding program for students who are in virtual, which has been one day a week. Our athletic program has resumed. We have a couple of sports that are actively practicing now, tryouts. We've got some sports that are doing preseason conditioning. Our ASAP program is resumed at our five elementary schools, and we've been serving about 145 students on an average day. COVID-19 impacts really began in Week Two, which we'll get to, in regards to significant number of students who have been identified in contact tracing as direct contacts, and then a significant number of staff who have been out either with a positive case or more likely in having to quarantine. Staffing in an effective instructional program is becoming increasingly more difficult as the high numbers of staff are out of our buildings. So our primary concerns at this stage are staffing, effectiveness of our programs when we don't have teachers in front of children, when we have high numbers of students. Traditional students continue to leave the traditional program to go virtual, and the rising number of students that are being served in virtual. And then continuity and quality of instruction, which certainly during the pandemic has been a concern going back to March, and then coming into the school year, starting remotely, going to different models of face-to-face instruction. And then this also, with continuity, speaks to the up-and-down nature of closing schools, which we've closed six schools to date in the last two weeks, losing their teachers, many who are out either as a positive COVID-19 laboratory confirmed case or they're in quarantine. So there's a lot of issues around these primary points of concerns at this point. Some timelines, so I've got a couple of graphs here. As you can see, the October 26th week, we turned in face-to-face grades three, five in the 6-12 hybrid in the second week. As previously stated, we staggered K2 coming in or pre-K2. And then you can see, beginning on November 3rd, cases that were identified by the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services that are school-related. So on the 4th, at Manio High School, on the 5th, Manio High School was closed, and I'll go into more detail on all these. First Flight High School was closed on the 6th. We identified cases on the 7th, which was a Saturday at Manio Middle. And then this past week has been a significant number of students and teachers who have been out either positive COVID laboratory confirmed case and/or quarantined. And this past week, we had one confirmed case at Manio Elementary School. On Veterans Day, we were contacted with seven cases. You can see, one at Kitty Hawk, one at First Flight Elementary, three at Manio Elementary School, two at First Flight Middle School. On the 12th, yesterday, we had two cases, one which was in Manio Elementary, another at Cape Hatters Elementary School. And yesterday, we closed four schools. It was impossible to go in and disinfect and sanitize four schools and be able to do that prior to the start of the school day. And First Flight Middle School not only was closed yesterday, but they were closed today because Ms. Childress and the administrative team needed 10 substitutes, which we had nowhere near availability to run an effective instructional program today. So, some more details in the timeline. On the 4th, three laboratory confirmed cases of COVID at Manio High School. There were 75 direct contacts, and we closed the school on the 5th. On November 5th, there was one laboratory confirmed case at First Flight High, 30 direct contacts, closed the school on the 6th. On the 7th, two laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19 at Manio Middle, 51 direct contacts. And we did not close the school because we were notified on a Saturday, and we were able to go in and disinfect and sanitize the school before Monday morning. On the 10th, this past week, one laboratory confirmed case at Manio Elementary School, 20 direct contacts. We were fortunate, we didn't have to close the school because of the Veterans Day holiday on Wednesday. Yesterday, seven laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19, one at Kitty Hawk, one at First Flight, three at Manio Elementary, three at First Flight Middle School, and this is a total of 200 direct contacts. All four of those schools were closed yesterday, and as I said, First Flight Middle School was closed today due to the lack of substitutes. On the 12th, two laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19, one at Manio Elementary, one at Cape Hatters Elementary, and there were 50 direct contacts. Cape Hatters Elementary School has been closed today, and MES is operated with 19 teachers out today, with only 2.25 substitutes. And how you get the .25 is someone can only stay a quarter of the day. Four TAs were out, remaining TAs taught classes, all staff covering duties and supervision. So, we sometimes get questions from staff and parents about what happens when a laboratory positive is confirmed. So this gives you an outline of typically the step-by-step process that's in play when I get a call from Sheila Davies with the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services. So she will call me directly, she will tell me the school and the individual who's been identified, the date of the positive test, and then she has to determine the contagious period, which is typically 48 hours before the onset of symptoms and/or the positive that has been identified. So there's a lot of moving parts with dates in trying to determine when someone came in direct contact with children or children with staff. An important note is, Dr. Davies and her team determines through contact tracing who needs to be quarantined. So that is not the role of superintendent or the school system. We talk through who and where they've been and what school, and if it's a student on a bus, obviously, we're looking to see who rode the bus that day. If it's a student who's been in school all day, who's been a positive case, then they're trying to determine the direct contacts for all those students. The takeaway here is, it's not, I don't determine who's quarantined. That's not my role, that's the role of the director, Dr. Sheila Davies.
John, Joe Talber, I wanted to ask you a question. The determination of, from Sheila Davies' office, in terms of a positive comes in in a classroom, and under their guidelines to you, they're saying the whole classroom has to be quarantined?
Yes, that's coming up right on the next slide, Joe. Good question. You're on top of it, and I didn't even give you this in advance, so. Good question. That's right. What Dare County Schools does do is then we contact the staff members, and we also call every single parent to say, the, in, Dr. Davies' department has been on overload with all these cases. Many of our school nurses are assisting the department in making, in doing contact tracing in the community, so it's been our responsibility to make all the direct calls to parents. So when that happens, our administrators drop everything, and in some of these cases, as you have seen, there's 50, 60 kids are involved, or 200 is in the case of one particular day. And we've got multiple administrators who are contacting parents and then breaking that news, and then trying to reassure them of why and the steps, and provide them with information, and try to address as many questions as possible. We're very consistent in that we have a script that goes from school to school that we develop so that everyone is getting the same consistent message. Parents do appreciate that we are making that contact directly. We wait in terms of additional step in making sure that an email official notification goes home, but we don't do that until we assure that we've contacted every single parent. Once the parents are contacted, then they are asked to come and pick their student up, or the staff member has to leave. And then, as we communicate and move through time, once all those calls have been made, then I get a letter of notification that comes from Dr. Davies that talks about the reasons why the student is being quarantined, the dates, testing information, all kinds of key contacts and references. And then Dr. Davies, each time when we send a letter, has done a webinar for parents the next morning at 8:00 AM for anyone who wants to come in and have more information or get access to communicate with her in a webinar. We also have most, a lot of the time, because we've had such high a number of contacts that we have to make, my central office staff gets involved, and Ms. Kinsel, Ms. Flora, Dr. McBride, Ms. Parker, everyone has played a role in helping assist the building administrators so they can still run their school building, but make sure that we get all these contacts. So it's a team effort. As I stated, quarantined individuals do leave campus. Talked about the official notification, the webinar. The other role that then we play is then we determine the sanitize and disinfecting needs based upon the situation and where students and/or staff have been. So in the case of, say, example, Cape Hatters Elementary School yesterday, the individual who was positive contact was in several classrooms. And so we were talking about a span of K5 students who were impacted in quarantine, and then several staff. And in this particular case, 25% of the Cape Hatters Elementary School staff is quarantined today. If there is a situation, so we go in with our school safety team, and we sanitize and disinfect the whole building. So we make that determination, and unfortunately, with how efficient our team is, we can go in and do that for a day, and we don't need two or three days to be out of school. It is tricky, and that all those kids who are being quarantined have to have remote instruction, so then there's a juggling that goes on with making sure everyone's got a device who's going home, and then we have to double down on how are we going to provide remote instruction for those 18 kids who just walked out of a classroom and out of the school. I have communicated with the school community every time that we've had one of these situations. You know, our administration is invested in being transparent, and so every time that we've got a summary that does go out, as you've seen and parents have seen, that we don't identify personal information, we identify the number of laboratory confirmed cases, where the site is, how many direct contacts, and then it's typical information about whether we have to close the school or not. Not every superintendent is doing that. So I think in some ways, we, I'm not being critical, but I'm just stating that I know I get a few questions every now and then that we aren't seeing this across other parts of the region, and that may be because they have different modes of communicating. So our community expects me to be transparent and to be proactive, and we're dedicated to doing that.
No, it's not.
Pardon? Oh, did I already have a question? Then the troubleshooting begins, particularly when there's multiple staff out for the principal, and then sometimes working with their supervisor, their director, to try to figure out how we're going to staff, particularly in cases where, Cape Hatters Elementary School, 13 staffs were being quarantined. Manio, you saw the example of Mr. Price trying to hold it together today, and what that looks like. So that is, with the high number of staff that are out in Dare County Schools, that becomes increasingly arduous. Teacher information, currently, there are 96 teachers in Dare County Schools who are out, and of the 96, 85 are COVID-related. That is over 25% of the teachers in the district, and I think it's closer to 30. The 11 who are not COVID-related may be maternity leave or just a typical sickness, so there's various miscellaneous reasons why those folks are out, but 85 are COVID-related.
John, of those 85, how many people are positive for COVID?
Probably six or seven? Yeah.
So out of the 17 cases, 16, 17 cases we have in the county, six of them are teachers?
Yes, don't quote me on that, but that's just from memory.
Yeah, okay. I just want to find out.
Sure, sure. So, you know, the more important figure is 17 overall cases. Part of our messaging tonight is, it's, our concerns are not around not having safe schools. Our concerns are not around the spread of COVID-19 in our schools. We only have 17 cases, but what is impactful is the significant number of kids who are being quarantined. But the most pivotal concern, or the primary concern, is our ability to staff effectively, continuity of instruction, and what that looks like. So we're not here to say that our schools are not safe. They are. We feel good about following all the protocols. We're not perfect, but we're doing an excellent job. We are running into some kids who do come to school with symptoms, and there's, in the breadcrumb trail of trying to figure out, in Dr. Davies' world, of who may have had symptoms and when, there are cases where staff and students have both come to school with symptoms, despite the fact that we do our health screener and our temperature check. That is happening. So the overall positive cases, your point, Joe, are extremely low, but the impacts on staffing are exploding.
Let me step in here just a second, too. Not to say anything other than congratulations that we have Dr. Davies, but Dr. Davies is also not an M.D. And she's made a couple of comments in other meetings that I didn't exactly, Harvey Hess, by the way, agree with. I'd like to know if you have the information, how many of our teachers have been hospitalized because of COVID?
I'm not sure that that is even releasable, to be honest with you.
Well, it wouldn't, it would be releasable. We're not talking about names. Have any of our teachers been hospitalized because of COVID?
I don't know that. I'm not tracking that.
Are there, any of our students been hospitalized because of COVID?
I don't know that. I'm not tracking that.
Okay. So we're tracking information that is exponentially quarantining people that may not necessarily need to be quarantined. And other places, other districts, and other states and other places are using different quantifications than we're using, apparently, for tracking and tracing and exponentially quarantining people, which puts people out of work and puts kids in a situation where they can't go to school. So I'm listening for what might be, and don't get me wrong, there is no one that wants our kids to be safer. As a matter of fact, I think that our kids are safer in school than they are going to Home Depot or, you know, Food Lion or anywhere else, because we know what we're doing, and we are providing the safety procedures and protocols that our students and our parents expect from us and that they are getting. So I'm getting this twofold kind of thing here that's coming out, that we're putting ourselves in a position, or backing ourselves in a corner with this exponential quarantining that doesn't relate to how kids are getting sick or how we're spreading, quote, COVID. And if we're thinking about, which obviously is on the board, you know, out here today, if we're thinking about closing schools down, we need to explore this stuff before we make decisions about it.
This is out? Okay. I can't speak for Dr. Davies. What I'm going to present in a few slides is the protocol that she follows that comes from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Our playbook is the Laying the Way Forward document that is a collaboration of the State Board of Education, NCDPI, and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. That is the protocols that we follow, we're mandated to follow by the state. I can't speak for what she's doing here versus another health department in Virginia or another state, or even compare and contrast across the state. What I can tell you is that she has consistently told us and put in writing that she's following protocol that comes from the state of North Carolina, and she makes that determination. So again, my role is not to make the determinations on quarantine. My role is to implement all the other health and safety protocols that are mandated by the state.
Dr. Farley, David Twitty?
Yes, sir.
What concerns me is the message that's coming out via text or email where the parents has the questions to complete prior to the students coming to our facilities.
Yes.
Are they just not completing the questions, or are they falsifying the information? Do we know that?
Well, I'm not going to accuse anyone of falsifying information. What I can say is, you're referencing our healthy roster.
Yes, sir.
Health screener that goes out every morning by 6:00 AM. And we have been highly efficient in tracking students and parents who indicate that they have answered yes to one of those questions, and if they do come to school. I've not been made aware of a student who said yes and got into a school. I do know that this past week, we had six or seven high school kids who had not completed their quarantine timeline and tried to get into school a couple of days early. Whether that was, for what reason, I don't know, but when we found those kids, then we communicate with parents, they still had two days left for quarantine. You know, I'm not going to accuse anyone of falsifying information. So, you know, there's a judgment that needs to be made in the home if you're answering questions about your student and their symptoms. And so, you know, I would say it's, I mean, some of this is just natural, that not everyone is going to totally be aware necessarily, depending upon their home situation. In making that assessment, I think what we've tried to do is to be very communicative about making sure that you don't send your children to school, staff do not come to school if they have symptoms. And so some of this has slipped through the cracks. So, but I would say, for the most part, we do not have kids, I know we don't have kids who are coming in our schools who are answering yes, or the parents are asking yes to those questions, and there's just some natural way that kids are, you know, they're coming to school and maybe they shouldn't. So some of it is decision-making, and our job is to try to educate. So I can't answer for all the parents. And there's not a slew, but there have been at least four or five in the last week where kids at some point had some symptoms and still came to school. So our job is to try to continue to be vigilant and communicate.
And also, follow up on that, that means the staff has the same questionnaire.
Yes.
Assuming, and we shouldn't assume, but that warning of, they're completing their questionnaire because they currently didn't that morning have the symptoms, and during the day, they did, which it happens. We, I mean, we don't know that, so, you know, that also concerns me about the questionnaires. If they complete it, they feel good in the morning, but then when they go into the building later, a couple hours later, they're not feeling so well, so the questionnaire really didn't help us.
Yeah, and also, keep in mind, there's, you know, hundreds of thousands of people across the country who are positive, but they're asymptomatic. So that's part of the...
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Dr. Farley, Bee Bassnight, have we had to isolate any person going into the school due to the temperature check?
There's been a couple. Yeah. There's been a couple.
Students, okay.
But you can say, this is Harvey Hess, you can say that without qualification, that every reported case of COVID has been verified by the health department, student or staff member, every single one.
Yes, that's their job.
Okay.
Dr. Farley, Frank Hester here. Could you explain the process from the period that once someone has received a result that they're positive for COVID, how they re-enter the system again, and for the people that are quarantined, how they re-enter the system again?
Yeah, I think the slides are here in just a couple of moments are going to answer your question and to Mr. Talber's question.
Okay, thank you.
And as we get there, so these are COVID-related absences at this point. So you can see in this column on the left, the school site, the overall number of teachers, the number of absent, and then the percent absent. And again, 85 teachers are currently out, which is about 24%, 25% of our total that are COVID-related. Substitute teacher information, so typically, traditionally, about 245, 250 substitutes are on the list. We shared with the board that we had polled substitutes prior to our, I believe it was our October 1st meeting, and it presented that information of those who were contacted, about 75%. I think then it was about 80, maybe, who had indicated they would still substitute at the time. Currently, of that 120 who originally, after, so our polling was about 80 who responded, and then we finally, over the course of a couple of weeks, got to 120 substitutes who said they would still be willing to substitute. Now we are down to 88. So they're dropping off by the day, and in fact, a couple principals who are impacted this week have said, several of their substitutes in the last 48 hours don't want to come back from the building. So the substitute availability is dropping. And keep in mind, in order to staff the virtual school and the K5 and 6-12 hybrid, we had out of the chute before October 26th, hire some certified substitutes just to cover all the classes we had to. Virtual school update, so we started on October 26th with 1,017 students. We've added 203 students in about three weeks, and every time that we have... And every time that we have to close a school or a significant number of cases, the tracking has been twenty to twenty-five parents from that school are entering virtual.
And at that point, when you add to virtual, are we able to add to the staff?
No.
Teaching virtual?
Right.
So we're increasing numbers for each teacher teaching virtual?
Absolutely, absolutely. K-5 virtual is highly manageable with the number of kids that we are serving by teacher. Six-twelve has exploded. We have some virtual teachers who have had to serve or are working with over a hundred-and-fifty students.
For one class.
For one teacher.
One teacher.
Serving a hundred-and-fifty students. So we have some examples of a teacher might have started with a hundred-and-ten on their roll in October twenty-six until they, they've got a hundred-and-sixty.
So Dr. Farley, David Twitty here. If, if you signed up for virtual originally, that means you're virtual until January and you could not come back to the classroom or to the building, but if you went to the building face-to-face, you could often and come back to virtual, is that correct?
We are allowing, have allowed, parents to go from virtual to traditional and from, and then the other way, okay?
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought that when we set that, that procedure, you stay there until the semester is over with.
Our strong preference is that you do stay, however, the way the state guidelines are written, we cannot close families out of the virtual option.
So that makes it more difficult for the teachers?
Yes.
And that's not a good thing.
Correct.
Is there, Mary Ellen Balance, is there any, was, has there been any switch from virtual back to the classroom?
Some.
Not as much as there is. There was the very, very first week, but week two and three.
Yeah.
It's trying to went, went completely virtual.
Right.
Okay.
So, for the folks listening at home, Dr. McBride, who's our Director of Technology, and she's over the virtual school, stated that in the first week, we saw some kids who opted out of virtual and so, and then in weeks two and three, little to none have opted out. And the original shift we saw, we anticipated because kids compare notes about who the teachers are and they, believe it or not. And. Switched their teachers, and so there was some movement initially in the first week. But by the state, the way the state guidelines are written, the mandate is, is, virtual has to be on the table at any point in time.
John, Harvey Hess. When we're following the, the COVID guidelines as set down by CDC, so.
CDC makes recommendations, for the most part.
Of course, and then CDC makes recommendations, which we can move one way or the other from.
Well, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services determines.
Is following, is following CDC recommendations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, anytime someone, and this is direct from this, that you had to be within six feet of someone and you had to be within six feet of them for a total of more than fifteen minutes, that's when you get quarantined. Not prior to that, not less than that, but at that. So you had to be within six feet of the person next to you and you had to be within that for fifteen minutes or more before you used the quarantine protocol. Is that what's being followed here?
No, that changed about a month ago.
From who? Roy Cooper or, I mean, who, who changed it?
The CDC changed the recommendation.
And the recommendation is now what?
That it's cumulative, it can be a total of fifteen minutes as opposed to fifteen minutes straight contact.
This is Beeb Assnight, you know, Mr. Hess, you and I both have been in the classroom.
Yes, ma'am.
And you, we know students are going to get closer.
I do.
Within a classroom. So I can understand the quarantine of the whole class because at some point during the day, they're going to interact for more than fifteen minutes, I think.
And let me also clarify, I'm not rubber stamping that the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services follows every recommendation from CDC. They obviously, I'm not a part of that body, I don't make that determination. So I know the CDC and a lot of literature that comes out offers recommendations versus mandates, the states, as I understand it, then to make the determination of whether they are going to implement their own standards based upon the recommendations. So I'm not, you know, I'm not a part of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. I'm just telling you from a practitioner's viewpoint that that's the flow of information as I understand it. CDC make, makes recommendations, state make their own determinations.
So, to be clear, and just so that I'm up to date, because I, I can be woefully, you know, out of that loop, that what we're doing in Derrick County is we're counting minutes that students are within six feet of someone that, because you said it was cumulative. So we're counting minutes that a student can be within six feet of a teacher or another student or a bus driver. And then how do we, how do we, how do we audit that to make sure that it's just not a one-time thing, that they were within six feet for three minutes? I mean, how do we, how do we audit that to make sure that we're not over, you know, complicating the situation to make sure that the kids, you know, are, are with, within that protocol? I, I, I don't see how that can be monitored.
Well, it, it can't be monitored. We're not walking around with stopwatches measuring the amount of time that students are near a positive case when we don't even know that the student is positive or that the staff member is positive. So let's jump to the, we'll come back to this, it's probably healthy at this point if we jump to the FAQs that answer some of these questions. And I apologize, I referenced that the slides will be coming up and then there are a few more down, obviously. So I think the, the board will get some clarity on the procedural standpoint. There we go. So first, who makes the determination of who is a direct contact when the laboratory confirmed case of COVID-19 has occurred? The Derrick County Department of Health and Human Services determine who the direct contacts are that need to be quarantined, but it's not at the role of the Derrick County Schools Administration. Can you share more specific information regarding contact tracing? The Derrick County Department of Health and Human Services following the CDC, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services guidance related to contact tracing. Contact tracing of direct contact starts forty-eight hours prior to the onset, onset of symptoms for the positive patient. Excuse me, my mic went out. Or forty-eight hours prior to the testing date of the positive person if they're asymptomatic. So, if an individual started with symptoms on the sixth, we would have to go back, we being the health department, we'd have to go back and identify all direct contacts from the fourth, fifth, and sixth until which time the positive person was isolated. Their end-of-quarantine date, to Mr. Hester's question, for the direct contact is then based on the last date of exposure.
John, Joe Tover, what, what does? I'm sorry? It is on. Hello? Yeah. I'm sorry. Joe Tover, the previous slide talks about direct contact. Do we have a definition of direct contact? Because the CDC seems to define it as Harvey suggested, of the fifteen minutes incrementally, it doesn't have to be for fifteen minutes continuous, it does talk about some other combinations of fifteen minutes. But I don't see a definition of direct contacts there defining it in terms of why we were quarantining people. So, do you know what, how they define direct contacts?
Yes, we just, we just covered it. Six feet or less for a total accumulation of fifteen minutes or more.
Well, aren't our classrooms set up to divide students by fifteen, by six feet and with masks on coming in?
Not in K-5.
Not in K-5. So, but, but we have other issues in the high school too with that, and they're in that situation where there's social distancing, the six feet and the mask, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And notwithstanding that, we've been quarantining the people in the high school and the middle schools.
Yes, yes. We haven't, but the Department of Health and Human Services has.
I understand, okay, I, I misspoke on that, but I'm just trying to understand the direct contact definition. And I was assuming that we were isolating our students to keep the social distancing and wearing the mask.
So, this, it's humanly impossible, we don't have cameras in classrooms.
No, I'm not asking that.
But, but we're drilling down into how the determination is made, okay? We, I'm not being critical, I'm just, I'm just stating.
I understand that.
Okay, a reasonable judgment is being made by the Department of Health and Human Services about the amount of time that kids could be exposed, okay? All of our classes, for the most part, elementary, minimum thirty, thirty to forty-five minutes, high school ninety minutes. We don't have timers on kids, we don't have cameras in the classroom. So is it possible that a child sitting in the first row who's a positive does not come within six feet of someone who's five rows over? Is it possible? Of course it's possible.
Well, let me issue a question then. Of these seventeen cases, how many cases have been from student-to-student contact in a, in a room? Like where we've quarantined those kids in a classroom from a student that's gotten infected?
Well, we're, we only can tell you how many based upon a student case, the number of direct contacts are being quarantined. I don't, I can't tell you where they picked it up or where there was transmission.
Right. And, and so, I, I mean, I'm not blaming what your staff is doing, I'm blaming the system, the quarantine system that's in place here because it, it doesn't seem to follow CDC guidelines. And it seems to make it up out of thin air, quite frankly. And quite frankly, the system that's in place now is a setup for failure, which is where we're facing now with the staffing issue. Because if you start quarantining based on somebody coming into the school with, with the COVID, this is what, what the end result is. And, and I've had an opportunity to talk to other school systems in North Carolina, they don't follow this same pattern. And they're having less of a problem because they're not, they're not kicking everybody out of school, they're just taking the person that came up hot sort of for the COVID and, and quarantining that, that person.
Well, I don't work for the CDC, I'm not a scientist. What I can tell you is that Dr. Davies and her team are following the guidelines that come from the state. Obviously, there are situations where someone could be in a room and not be within a direct contact. What I would say is that she is erring on the side of safety and trying to mitigate the potential spread. And I think I would agree that fourteen days of quarantine, if it was my child, versus not pulling children out and risking exposure, I think is sound strategy. So I don't, but it's not my decision.
I understand.
I'm not going to speak for her.
I, I, I don't, I, I think there's, in my opinion, an overzealousness, quite frankly, in the quarantine, quarantining of those people under these circumstances. And it does set us up for failure, which you're, like I said, like we're facing right now with the staffing issues. Because when you start quarantining people, that means we can't put them back in the classroom for fourteen days.
Well, and, and these procedures are going to continue.
Okay.
Okay, they're coming from the state, she's, she's following through, okay, I'm not here to defend Sheila Davies.
Right.
I'm here just to report the facts as I know them and that she's following state guidelines. I don't know what other districts are doing, I'm too busy with my eleven schools.
I, I, maybe I should have a discussion with her and, and talk to her about it.
But, but Harvey Hess here, the, we've already stated that, you know, there are state guidelines that ostensibly she's following. But she's also making personal judgments in, in quantifying or qualifying what the state guidelines are. So I, I, I would think we might need to get her in, to talk with her about exactly how she is applying the state guidelines. This is not about what you and, and Dr. Kinsel, I mean, Ms. Kinsel, and all are doing. Every, there is not one person in this room right now that is not looking for the very best for our children, our, our parents, our stakeholders, and our community. And that's you, me, Dave, everybody in this room is looking for the best. But I, I don't want us to cave to our fears of what we think might happen as opposed to doing what we think is the best following guidelines for our children. And I have more to say about that later, but that's, go on.
We're done, Dr. Farley. Before you go on, let me, this is David Twitty. I have a friend that was diagnosed with COVID. And this person was told they had to wait five days before they got tested. Out of the fourteen.
Yes.
Quarantine, okay? Let's just say what if this person came back after five days negative?
Okay, I'll, I'll answer that.
Now, we're still, we're still seeing them fourteen days quarantined.
I'm, I'm starting to earn my doctorate in COVID-related. But to your point, Mr. Twitty, that five days, they're testing, once they've been determined that they were exposed and they're quarantined, the health department is recommending about five days out.
Right.
To be tested. And that's because during that period of time, it's most likely to have a reliable result, whether it's positive or negative. If it comes back negative, it's still going to go for, there still need to be out fourteen days because again, they could still show up with symptoms within that fourteen-day window, which then would put them in jeopardy of, of being contagious. So that's the whole window in terms of the fourteen days and why testing has to happen at a certain time period.
Okay, so why would you go get tested after five days? If you're feeling bad, you're sick, they're not going to give you anything to make you feel better, just will stay home and not get tested. And then when we don't get tested, that means our numbers is not as high.
Well, when you don't get tested, you're still out for a minimum of ten days if you're showing symptoms.
Correct, I, I understand that, but as we look in Derrick County, which is no fault to ours, is that more you go get tested, the more numbers goes up. So if you wait to five days and you're not feeling the symptoms, why go get tested? Wait until, I mean, me personally, I'm speaking for David Twitty. I would not got tested.
And testing is not mandated?
Right.
It's not mandated. But again, they recommend because they, they can. I mean, again, each individual's different and there is some science behind some, some of the, some long-term effects that seem to be coming out of that. But I'm, I haven't quite earned my doctorate yet, so I'm going to hold off on that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Farley, Frank Hester, it, it sounds like we're in a catch-22, that we have the ideal world where we obviously see and brought up some issues that aren't lining up properly. But we have to play with the cards that were dealt with right now. So no matter what we're talking about now, don't we still have to deal with the, the instruction that's in place now to move forward?
Right, so, you know, my job is to ensure that we are following board policy, that we're following state board policy, and during the COVID pandemic, all the different protocols that have come down from the various agencies, from Cooper to the state board to DPI, to Department of Health and Human Services, okay? We, one of the outcomes, whether we agree or not on pinpointing the number of kids that would be quarantined, an outcome that we are, is having a significant impact and mountainous challenges for us is the number of staff, have you seen, who are not in our buildings and God love our substitutes, but there's no, there's no substitute for the certified classroom teacher. And beyond running out of substitutes, I mean, we are putting, we had a phys ed teacher in this building yesterday who had to go into a math class. We have data managers who are going in and monitoring in, in the lunchroom. We have teacher assistants who are teaching. The quality of instruction with all of the high numbers of staff that are coming out of our buildings is, it's impacting the quality of instruction across the entire county, okay? I think the next slide explains the procedure as far as some of what we've been debating about, about the six feet, and drilling down to try to make that determination. So, because, so the question is, why are we quarantining an entire classroom for one positive? Because of the prolonged time students are in classes together and the inability to ensure that six feet or more was maintained between students and staff at all times, entire classes may be quarantined. If a laboratory confirmed positive case is determined to have been in class during their contagious period, the entire class is quarantined as part of the CDC's and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services guidance to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. In most of the cases that have come up where students are having to be quarantined, they are with another student for a significant amount of time in that classroom. I think it would be reckless if we started to, or if, again, it's Department of Health and Human Services, started to pinpoint three or four kids that may be sitting around that student in that zone area and that other students, because we have no way of measuring the movement in the classroom. Did they pass each other in the hallway? Are they congregating outside? What is the movement in the classroom between the teacher and students? And so, Dr. Davies is following the guidelines, and in my opinion, erring on the side of caution. Unfortunately, one of the impacts of following these guidelines and erring on the side of caution, it is taking a significant number of staff members out of Dare County schools. And this is part of what we're dealing with and our primary concern. Again, I'm not speaking for her, what I can tell you, I do talk to her on an almost daily basis now, unfortunately. And she's following these guidelines that come down from the state.
Harvey Hess, I object to your use of the word reckless in looking at how we direct and how we observe what's going on in the classroom. I think that if we're going to talk about science, then we ought to talk about science. But I don't think it's reckless for us to question how these implementations of these regulations are being put in. And so, a, a, as someone who's questioning in the best interest of the students and their parents and our community, I, I, I just don't like the word reckless at all.
Okay, noted. My comment was not that it's reckless to ask questions. My comment was, I think it would be reckless if we drilled down to a small number of kids who may have exposed to someone who's positively COVID-19 versus making the judgment that's being made now.
John?
Yes.
Quickly, Mary Ellen Balance, do, we have nothing to do with, we're not doing any contact tracing within the school, correct?
No, sir.
You just, you're notified of a case, you notified Sheila Davies, Sheila Davies calls you and tells you who has to be quarantined?
Uh, no, she is notified of the cases, then she calls me.
Okay.
Then I take her direction based on contact tracing of who needs to be quarantined. Oh, yeah.
Bee Bass Night here, you just, you provide the information of which school when she contacts you, is that correct?
We provide, so she may say.
She might say.
X Smith.
Yeah.
Second grade student. This, the school nurses who she supervises has access to Power School. So the school nurses help her with contact, contact tracing. So if Ann Smith from X school comes up as a positive, then she's confirmed with her school nurses to see if in fact it is a student in Dare County schools. And then she calls me and she'll say, you know, Ann Smith, blank school, is tested positive. And then we then contact the principal, who then makes the determination about where will Ann Smith, or the child was within the contagious period. That information then goes to Davies. She interviews, if it's a staff member, part of their contact tracing is, who have you been around in the last forty-eight hours, so on and so forth. So, we're providers of information, and then we are the communicators of information. She makes the determination.
Thank you.
I believe this is the last quarantine FAQ that I've got in this presentation. The question is, why does my student need to quarantine if they're wearing a mask the whole time? While the masks being used by the general public are certainly helpful to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, they're not a hundred percent effective. Masks are most effective when worn by the positive individual, you're actually protecting others when you wear your mask. Therefore, there's no way to verify the effectiveness of the mask being used or the individuals were wearing the mask properly at the time of exposure. The CDC guidance states that quarantine is irrespective of whether the person with COVID-19 or the contact was wearing a mask. A question we frequently get, and this is from the Health Department. If we jump back, we veered in some other directions with some questions, excellent questions. In the virtual school, so challenges, this is a slide I jumped over. Staffing to accommodate the increased number of students enrolled in the virtual school is the primary challenge. In addition to teaching virtually, eighty percent of secondary virtual teachers also teach face-to-face. Sixty percent of virtual teachers have class sizes higher than fifty students. Nine teachers have classes over a hundred and twenty. Because class sizes are so large, teachers are unable to provide live instruction and respond to individual questions. So one of our challenges with the growing number of students that we are serving virtually is that experience is different. The remote instruction experience, when we started school in August for the first several weeks, was much more effective. We were able to have live instruction on almost a daily basis where teachers are spending, it was typically nine to twelve-thirty, nine to one o'clock, at various times where we'd be able to provide live virtual instruction. That has been nearly impossible, particularly in the classes in the virtual experience where students, where the number of students we're serving are much higher. So thus, the teachers have got to look at alternative methods that are more independent, study-based, we're kind of a general term, as opposed to the quality of virtual instruction that we're able to do in remote. So, that experience is, and we've got some feedback in the last board meeting with some public comments about that. So that is, is a struggle, particularly with climbing numbers.
John, Joe Tober, first of all, I'd like to apologize because I understand you're just the messenger, and perhaps.
No apology needed, but I appreciate it.
But, but, but I think it would have been more helpful, and, and I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm just suggesting at this next meeting that we have, that Ms. Davies show up and answer some of the questions that we have regarding what she's impressing upon us to do in terms of our direct contact and quarantine of students and staff. And, you know, most of our questions that have been addressed today are addressed, that's that issue.
Sure.
And trying to find out, how do we get to a place where we can reopen our schools safely and keep our staff in place? And I'll just go and say that I know that you and your staff have done a tremendous job in trying to put this thing together. We asked you to open the schools up, and I think you, you all worked real hard to do that. Unfortunately, something outside of your control has, has taken over. And Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend that the next meeting that we have, we bring Ms. Davies in to answer some of the questions that we have regarding how we're utilizing the, you know, the issues that we're facing here.
Bee Bass Night here, I'm certain that we can probably invite Ms. Davies to another meeting, yes, and have her come in and explain.
Absolutely.
Dr. Farley, Frank Hesker again. I, unless I missed it, I still didn't see how the introduction of the student comes back into the classroom. So you test positive for COVID. What, is there another test that takes place that says, okay, now you're good, now you can come back in the class? What happens with the kids that are quarantined for their amount of time? How's that transition go from being out of the class to back in the class?
Sandy Kinsel. The way it's working is, at the end of the fourteen-day quarantine period, then they are free to come back so long as they're not showing any symptoms. We have had at least one staff member that had to extend their quarantine past fourteen days, and it was because they couldn't answer one of the three questions that's on the daily screener with a negative. So, it's, it's going to be dependent upon them and, and the individual in terms of how their health is at the end of that quarantine period. Again, getting back to Mr. Twitty's question, you know, at the end of fourteen days, I mean, that fourteen, fourteen days is the incubation period. So, there's a period of time when it, you're most likely to get a reliable test result, but everybody's different, and you could end up with symptoms afterwards. It's not an exact science in terms of, you know, the absolute. So, this is the general practice and the guidelines. And so, again, if they're exhibiting any symptoms at the end of the fourteen days, they're going to be asked to stay home, and obviously, we hope they will. So the questions, the screeners are really going to help guide that entrance, entrance back into school. I hope that helps.
Bee Bass Night here. And, and thinking about that, when we, if we quarantine a teacher and the teacher's entire, entire class, then ideally, if no one's showing symptoms after fourteen days, they all come back at the same time. So when we're looking at continuity of instruction, that would be a good thing, I would think, to do that. Does it work that way? I mean, I know it's not all neatly packaged that way, but.
In a perfect world, yes.
In the perfect world, I understand.
In a perfect world, yes.
During the quarantine period, if the teacher is not ill and is asymptomatic, do they continue remote instruction with their classes?
That's, that's our goal, it depends.
It depends. Again, at the elementary level, yes, that's what they're doing, is they're going to continue. It's more of a challenge at the secondary because of the movement of the kids through different periods of class. Elementary kids are self-contained, as you know, so it's much easier to be able to manage that. At the high school, even if we have someone who's quarantining or has an accommodation that has them working from home, because the, if you'll call it a pod, those kids that may have been quarantined, then after they're in that one period of class, then they're no longer, they don't travel in pods as much. So there's some additional kids that are going to be not at the, taught by that teacher, but are not quarantined, so period two, period three, period four. We have to have a substitute or an adult in the room so that we can supervise the students while the teacher is offering remote. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that, that makes a lot of sense. I'd like to suggest that, this is Harvey Hess, I'd like to suggest that, you know, I, I'm seventy years old, hey? And I would be willing to come on a volunteer basis and step into the morning to greet students, to help a teacher in the classroom, to take that time to do that. I'm not patting myself on the back, I'm just saying, I'm willing to do that. And I, I know how much the parents, I talked to three pediatricians this afternoon, three, actively practicing pediatricians. Every one of them said, please keep at least your K-five students in school, and the EC students were, without question, the, 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 the trauma and the anxiety and all the stuff that goes with those students and their parents. And I've got a bunch of stuff on my phone, which I don't need to show up, from EC students have, have said today that their students come home with smiles on their faces, that they were forlorn prior to going back to school, they love their teachers and everything. We've, we've got to look at and mitigate this idea of it one way or the other way. And I'm, I'm so afraid that people are living their fears instead of their lives and putting their children in a position of, 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 of not knowing what's going on, that it, I mean, it really, it really tears me. I'm the father of a special needs student that went through Dare County schools. And I can tell you that it, it tears at my heart every time I see a, a parent come to me, or text me, or call me, or come to my place of business and talk to me about, please don't take our, our kids face-to-face away from them. So when we're thinking about this, and I know there's a lot of components, I, I get it, that, and again, there's not a single person here that is not looking for the best interest of every single student in Dare County. That, you know, trying to think about closing it down because we've got vacations coming and this and that and the other, I think doesn't do justice to our children, and that's my opinion. But, and I got your thing the other day, you know? I was on the sub-list, and you said, you know, that the board attorneys say that, you know, if you're on the board, it's conflict of interest for you to be on the sub-list. I'll volunteer. I'll go to any school in Dare County, any day, every day, to help out. If it's printing papers off, if it's bringing the classroom, then the teacher can go to the bathroom. We have teachers like that in Dare County that'd be willing to do that. And I just think we need to keep our kids in school as best we can, that's.
Mr. Hess, Sandy Kinsel, and we appreciate your volunteerism, and will certainly take any help that anyone wants to give us. That's not going to solve the inequities that we're seeing when parents are taking their kids from face-to-face and putting them in virtual. When we have teachers that are teaching virtually, that have a hundred and seventy-eight kids assigned to them, and in our virtual classrooms, again, as the movement continues, we have some, and again, I'm speaking specifically to the secondary level, but we have some teachers that are in a face-to-face environment, teaching A-day, B-day, that may have ten students in front of them that they see in each of their four periods. And so, a, a, again, there's some inequities that are happening that I think, that are causing us challenges with being able to staff appropriately, and we are stretching our teachers so thin. I will just close by saying that I'm, I'm concerned for what we're asking of our teachers when they're teaching during their planning period, to be able to help us to provide that virtual option that we're required to do while teaching students face-to-face and having the volume of students assigned to them. There's a breaking point.
I understand, I was a teacher for twenty-five years, and I had thirty-five-plus students in six classes a day at Manial High School when I was there. Thirty-five students, six classes a day. And I did that, and so did all the other teachers that were there. So, I think it's time to, you know, you got ten students in front of you? You know, it's, it's time to step up. Everybody's working, everybody's going to Publix, they're working in Publix, they're working in restaurants, they're, my, my daughter is a nurse, she's working every single day in the hospital, you know? And so, all these folks that are out there, that are doing their jobs every single day, don't really feel that understanding of someone saying, well, I've got ten class kids in the classroom, or I've got these many people on virtual, you know? It's your job. If you're a teacher, it's your job to teach. And, you know, if you, if you don't feel like you can do the job, get another job.
And with all due respect, our teachers are teaching, and they are working.
And I, and I've said that every single time I've worked here.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Bee Bass Night here. I, I think that we're, I think we're looking at an issue of the teachers are working every single day, sometimes from eight in the morning till midnight, doing the work they need to do. I think we're looking at an issue of not having enough teachers to man our face-to-face instruction. And we are at, what did you tell me, a hundred and five substitutes in our district as of today, being used. If you can't have a teacher in front of a class, you cannot have the class. And we're, we're at that point, we're at a breaking point where our teachers are out, they're sick, some of them on, on medical, what do you call it, Sandy, medical leave because of, in health issues themselves. But I think we're at the point now, we don't have enough staff to staff the buildings.
Frank Hesker again, this is just a general question. Thank you for all the data that you provided, all the hard work you, you've put forth. What are you recommending as far as what we should be considering at this point?
Frank, and Mary Ellen Balance here, with all due respect, his job is to provide us with the information. I, I hate for him to be put on a spot to where he has to, he makes a determination like that when it's our job as a board to come up with that decision. And I know you respect his, and we all, as we all do, but I think to put him in the position to make a recommendation for something like this is a, is a tough.
I understand that. My question was more built around what seems to be something that will have the greatest success, the most practical opportunity to be successful. I mean, it's, it's kind of hard, well, it's not hard. I mean, it's, it's kind of hard, well, it's not hard, to see that you have a dilemma trying to hit all these targets, but not have enough teachers to do it. It does, it, it just doesn't match up that way. Because of the, the, the procedures and the things that are in place that we have to deal with as far as what sets people being quarantined, people being all the, I mean, you have to deal with the cars that you have now and place and the stuff that we have in front of us. It's clear to see that we don't have enough teachers to do what we have to do. And have you had any teachers that have decided to retire sooner now because of this additional stress?
Yes, sir.
And David Twitty here, Mary Ellen, I, I certainly agree with you a little bit, but also I agree with Frank. Because there's two issues that we haven't even discussed tonight. And that's our special needs and our athletics. You know, and I think Dr. Farley, I don't want to put him under the bus, and he, it is our decision as a board member. But where Frank was coming from, there is bigger picture here, other than just the classroom day to day. So.
And I don't disagree, but I feel like we're getting trapped into trying to figure out why we're quarantining when it's not, that's not our responsibility. So we're having this big discussion over why people are being quarantined or why they're not quarantined, when at the end of the, it doesn't really matter.
I, I agree with that.
We're faced with a situation where we have to quarantine, which takes people out of the school. And when we do, when we take teachers out of the classroom and we have all of this turmoil going on, we lose the inability to effectively deliver instruction consistently.
I, I wholeheartedly agree with you, but I don't think that's where Frank was coming from.
And the more we have to close schools in order to sanitize and clean and all that stuff, the more people we're going to have in virtual, which means there's going to be more stress on our virtual teachers because they're going to be up to two hundred kids or three hundred kids. And so we're, we're, I think what we're all getting at is that we're hitting a breaking point. It's not our fault we're where we are. I don't disagree that sometimes I think they are, I, I don't want this to be about fear. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. We shouldn't be afraid, but we have to be practical about the hand that we are dealt and how we're going to play it so that our kids get a consistent and effective instruction.
The other part to that is just what David said, because I have a whole list of questions over here. Because one thing affects the other. Because if we're talking about moving in another direction with virtual, I think that has a direct impact on sports, which is already trying to start. I also think that the special needs kids need that face-to-face time. So all I'm trying to find out is, just based on where you sit, what are some of the, what will allow us the biggest impact for the most kids at this time?
I mean, the answer to that is to have as many highly effective teachers in front of kids, regardless of the mode of delivery. And right now, we're in a slippery slope where that is not happening. And if these numbers continue to persist with eighty-five, ninety, ninety-five teachers who are out, and we can't predict, we don't have a crystal ball, I don't know what the numbers will be like in two weeks, I don't know what they'll be in two months. What I do know is that we have major staffing concerns right now. And our, our job is to provide a high-quality instructional program. When we don't have the staff to do that, that we can't achieve that goal. To the athletics conversation, the, which we'll get here in a few slides, the chair and the vice chair did ask me to put together a presentation of what would happen if the board decided, I'm speaking for the board, if the board decided to go back to remote, what that looks like, and athletics is certainly one of those considerations. The other thing I would advocate for is we have about eighty-eight, eighty-nine students who are in our low incidence disability classes throughout the district, we have one in each school. And those students typically are visually impaired, they're, have hearing loss, deaf blindness, significant cognitive impairment. And I think that if there is a decision to alter from the current mode of delivery, those students, many of those students have a difficult time accessing their education remotely. So I would advocate if the board does decide to go in a different direction, that we still serve those kids on a daily basis. Yes. So we've covered some of these points, I feel we haven't, additional staffing information. We don't have enough substitutes for every vacancy. Some teacher assistants are actually teaching, some teachers are filling in out of field. This is a key point with teachers, point four. Many of our teachers across this district do not have planning time. And you're talking about high need, I mean, it's been a law in North Carolina and it's, so that teachers can have the time it takes to plan effectively, look at their data, look at different approaches and work with their peers. The law has eased, unfortunately, for teachers during the COVID- nineteen pandemic, where districts do have a lot, a latitude to not, so they have to provide all that planning time. But that is, if we lined up four hundred teachers in this room right now, they would, as an advocate for our teachers, they would heavily emphasize this point. Many staff are assuming extra responsibilities, virtual loads, if we talked about, are extreme. Many special classes have been canceled, so at the elementary level, we've had special teachers who are out in quarantine and there's no way to provide those classes. And so then the home run teacher has to lose a planning period. And kids don't get the experience of being in a gymnasium or in a music class and so on. So, under the direction or the directive from the board, vice chair and chairman Bassnight, they asked me to put together what it would look like and recommendations if the Board of Education decided to return to remote learning. This is, like everything that we've done, a summary that our thirty-five administrators were collaboratively district-wide, earned agreement on. We would recommend remaining in remote through the end of first semester. K-five virtual students would continue with their current virtual teacher. So those, and the reason behind that is that those students are in classrooms where it's very manageable. And there's eighteen, twenty, twenty-two kids who are in those classrooms work with a virtual teacher. There's no reason to upset that rhythm. K-five traditional students who are in buildings right now would continue with the current teacher that they have. Again, we can do that with class sizes, which we can't do six twelve. Our administrators strongly feel that grade six twelve would return to the original remote teacher, and then we do two things. We bring down the class sizes significantly that are in virtual, and then we provide a more quality experience because we could do more live instruction virtually. And that model would look like what we did in August, which is a significant gain for us instructionally versus what we're doing now in many virtual classes. No fault of our virtual teachers, who, like everyone else, Sandy has said, is, are working their tails off. But the reality is, there's a big difference in serving twenty-three kids versus a hundred twenty-three versus a hundred seventy. We would recommend to have workdays if the board decides to return to remote instruction, remote, remote learning on Monday and Tuesday. Reason is, we've got a tremendous amount of work that would have to be done in power school, adjusting schedules. We've got to do a device distribution on those days so that families who need a Chromebook, families who need Wi-Fi access, hotspots, we can distribute. As a trade for losing one of those days, we would recommend that December first, which is currently a parent teacher conference day, becomes a instructional day. The feeding program under this model would resume using the multiple site model. So if you recall when COVID struck in, in, in March, and March thirteenth was our last day, our first month of delivery in the feeding program was to multiple sites across the county. And we had about fifteen sites. So we had three schools where parents could come in and, and pick up two or three days a week. And we also have bus drivers who went up to key places in the county, such as, I know Dottie Park was one out here on the bypass, and different locations where parents could go and access hot meals, and we would do that three or four days a week. That would also keep more bus drivers employed under this model and would also keep more child nutrition staff employed as well. We would recommend that athletics that are underway continue. And then after school clubs, such as band, would continue. So we've already been offering students who are in virtual to still have the ability to participate in athletics. And certainly, we've, we've got to follow the state guidelines for those events. If you, if the community doesn't know, many do, but currently, we cannot have more than twenty-five fans in an indoor setting such as a gymnasium, and there's a maximum of a hundred in outdoor fields. As I mentioned a few moments ago, we would recommend students in extended contact, content classrooms be served in school, and that's approximately about eighty-eight, eighty-nine students. Some categories of employees, if we were to go remote, would be furloughed. That number of employees is somewhat minimal. The primary employees to be impacted by this would be the ASAP staff and then some bus drivers. We could probably employ about two-thirds of our current bus drivers. So, much like we had to furlough in the spring, or late spring, we actually waited until May, that would be the category of employees primarily that would be impacted. Possibly some child nutrition staff, but not likely. So that's what, if, it's the board's directive to have me and our staff and our, our leaders in Dare County Schools, if we're directed to return remote, those are our recommendations.
John Joe Talber, how many, when we first opened the schools on the twenty-sixth of October, how many children, how many children were back in school, back in the classroom situation?
So, our overall enrollment is fifty-two hundred, excuse me. Our, you know, at the time, the number of students who were in virtual was a thousand. So that's forty-two hundred, and then it fluctuates by the day, Joe. Because in the first week, we had staggered entry. So we had three through five, we didn't have pre-K two. Pre-K two across the entire district is probably.
So let's just say week two.
Seven hundred kids, and then you're talking about only two days a week where six twelve are coming. So ballpark, maybe twenty-five hundred kids, maybe the first week. I'd have to do some math.
Little more, though?
Second week more because we, we had pre-K, full pre-K, five buildings, yes.
Harvey Hess. John, although things get contentious in contentious situations, I hope you and Sandy and anybody else don't feel that, you know, you're being put upon in any untoward manner. And I would speak specifically for myself because I am a little contentious about this. And, and I have strong feelings about what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I want, I, I want us to come to the best conclusion that we can for the children and for the citizens and the stakeholders of Dare County. And looking at particularly right now, the idea of the K-five students. We have, we have a tremendous amount of parents that are two-income families living in this county that have K-five aged kids. If we decide to go back to remote in this situation, we're, we're turning the whole bucket upside down on these folks that have gone from being out to being in to being out again. And not only that, but the, the business community and, and the people that they work for and their families and everything else. I simply, after talking with, again, I've talked with the CDC, I've talked with the American Academy of Pediatrics, I've talked to three different pediatricians, they all advocated that we please keep the kids in school. K-five in particular, and EC students are, are, are students that we need there. I think the other students can, can bear up better, I don't think it's optimum. But I think the other students can bear up better in a remote kind of situation. But you take a kindergarten or first grade or a second grade, just, just got back to school and now with his teacher and understands his or her teacher and starts understanding what the socialization and the, and the social process is and everything, and then take them out again and leave them out until January. The problem that I see is this, is that if we come back in January, we're looking at the exact same hand that we got now. It, it's the exact same hand. And if we can't work this out now in some amenable fashion, all you're going to do is come to the same wall again in January. This is not on you, this is, this is on us, I understand that. And, and, you know, again, I don't know who said it, David, Frank, you know, you don't shoot the messenger. The messenger is the messenger. And, and you're bringing us the information, and I appreciate that. And I know everybody in central office, I know everybody here is working hard and listens to people all over. But I, I just feel that the, the students that are, would be so much more poorly served if they had to go back to remote, particularly K-five, if they had to go back to remote. I, I, and I can't emphasize that enough. And of course, our EC students that, that need that day-to-day face instruction, which you've already advocated for, and I appreciate that. I, that, that made me feel good. If there's, if there's a check mark, I just.
I'm glad I got one.
Not, not that you need, not that you, not that you need my vote, but, but, but I do appreciate that. And, and I know that all the parents of those students appreciate that. But, I mean, if I have to, if I have to throw somebody on a sword or a petard or whatever we're going to call it, you know, Agincourt is not here, I have to advocate for keeping our K-five students face to face. And, and that's.
And can, just to flip, just to flip the coin on that, I'm going to say this. I was, I was at work the other day, yesterday, and one of the girls at work got a phone call that their child was being quarantined. Now, she's out of work, and she finds out she's out of work. And she could quarantine her kid for fourteen days and send him back in school, and two days later, she could get another phone call and says, I'm in quarantine. So, right now, every day, the call, saying that they're in quarantine. You never know when that's coming, it could, it's constant. If you know through January that's, you know, you know what, this is what we have to do, this is where we're at because of the quarantine issue, this is where we're at because of the staffing issues, but now I know I have to find daycare and I have to figure it out. But now they're finding out, on Tuesday, they got to figure out something for Thursday. Or on Wednesday night, they get a phone call and they got to figure out something for Thursday, Thursday morning. So whether we send them back or we don't, that problem doesn't go away. It's just a toss-up on whether you get that phone call or not.
It doesn't go away, but, 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 but it's an idea and a, and a thought and a process that we, we have to try to have some consistency with what we do. And I've listened, and I, I have personal employees that are in that exact same situation, and, and.
But that's the point, that gives them consistency. Right now, they have no consistency.
The consistency, the consistency of negativity doesn't work. And so, i- if it's, if it's negative, if it's consistent negative, it's, it's not, it doesn't work.
The consistency of never knowing whether or not you're going to get that phone call every day.
I don't, I don't know that I'm going to get up in the morning, but I do.
That's exactly it, but you, but you have to, but if you know that you, there's a possibility you might, don't you want to be able to plan for that?
If I, if I, if I get in the car and go to the grocery store, I don't know that I make it back, but I do. So you got to, you got to move forward, you got to step forward.
Harvey, Mary Ellen, David Twitty here. I see, the thing about it is, Harvey, you and Bea know more than any of us about substitute teachers. We cannot say enough about our substitute teachers and our staff. I mean, they're awesome. They're the ones that get called late night, early in the morning, can you step up to the plate and do what you can do for us when a teacher cannot? And currently, right now, we're down to eighty-eight. Understand this, eighty-eight substitutes that's willing to step in to do the role of a certified teacher. And I feel that they do their job, do a great job, but they're not filling the shoes as a certified teacher. We need that consistency as that teacher in that classroom. And if we're at the point right now, if that teacher can be consistent, doing their job, remote learning, that's what I want. I don't want them to go back in the building, not doing their job and making our children not to be the best it can be, in which we've always been number one.
That's right, we are, Bea Bassnight, and I know right now, and we love our substitutes. They come in at a moment's notice, get called at eight o'clock in the morning, can you be here in thirty minutes? But we're, right now, as either Sandy or Dr. Farley said, we're pulling art teachers to cover classes, we're pulling PE teachers to cover classes, and while they're wonderful in their areas and they're probably maybe good in, in math, that's still not that certified teacher providing that great education that we have in Dare County. They are doing their best. They are doing their best, and I'm sure, I'm sure it's good, but it's not like having that certified teacher. In, a question for you, Dr. Farley, or maybe Sandy. In breaking down K-6, 12, and K-5, the numbers of teachers out, I mean, we have right many out in K-5, correct?
Yes.
I mean, it's like, I missed it. Yeah, okay. So, number of teachers.
That's as of today. And again, that includes...
So, you've got...
These numbers would be pretty consistent then for the next 14 days because of the quarantining?
So, we've got 25 K Pattersons, 27, 30, 41. It's a lot of teachers. Oh, and next, we had 35. So, those are big numbers to fill. And if we were to stay in person in K-5, it'd be hard to fill those. We just don't have the people to come in and, and step in and do the job.
Well, Madam Chair, looking at the screen, it's First Light Middle School, 41. Manio Elementary is 42. Substitute teachers, we got 88.
Yeah.
I didn't teach math in school, but I certainly know that we're coming, we're coming pretty close to 88.
We're coming, we're at the breaking point.
And you also realize that if we don't have the teachers, like, such as today, we had 25% from K Pattersons Elementary, so we had to close schools even for kids that were not even quarantined.
Well, look at...
And they, so last night, they get an email that they're, that the whole school's closed, and now we got to find childcare for today.
What, this is a good question here. Look at, look at the very bottom, DLA.
Yeah.
Four teachers, no students. They don't have...
No, no, no. So, we're, we're reading off the same script. The second column is number of teachers. The next is number of absences. So, the key total is the 85.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Got it.
So, you have 350, 66 teachers, 85 of them are out.
Yes. And, and a large number are at the elementary level.
Yes. And to, to your point, Mr. Hess, until this past week, I would have agreed 100% about keeping elementary schools open and thinking that they're not going to be as affected. But this week, with all but one of our elementary schools having had the exposures that they have and the quarantines that we have, and seeing by this chart that Manio Elementary School is our hardest-hit school in terms of the number of absences, it's, it's difficult. And they're the easiest to keep self-contained and be able to say, "We only need one substitute." And again, reminder that we're also getting into the throes of cold and flu season. Those symptoms kind of blend a little bit. So, again, I'm, I'm not trying to fear either because when we have put in the protocols that we have, and in spite of all of that, we're still seeing cases and exposures that we are, that are impacting our ability to be able to deliver strong, consistent instruction. That's our concern.
The cases, the cases, and I appreciate your comments, Harvey Hess. The cases and the exposures are, are not the question because you don't know where these people were exposed and where they got it from because that's going to continue. If people go to the grocery store, kids, kids that are in daycare, if they're not in school, they're going to be in daycare. They do not have the same protocols that we've put into place. And I, I've looked at it. I've got two grandchildren, and I've got three children. And they don't have the same protocols. It's safer in school than it is anywhere else. That is the safest place that our children can be. And, and that the idea that we're going to push this down the road and say, "Well, you know, maybe things will get better a week from now or two weeks from now or three weeks from now," is, is a fallacy. It's, it's a fantasy. It's not. And so, trying to deal with this, I think we need to deal with it in the least restrictive manner that we can do it. So, you know, and up here where you say, "Well, we've got 24%," or, my glass is long.
You're right, Al.
If we've got, if we've got at Kitty Hawk Elementary School, 23% absent, how does that change tomorrow? When do those 23% come back into school? In other words, is it going to be 18% tomorrow and then 14% the day after that? Are we getting better? Are we getting worse? And nobody can predict that.
Well, but we can because the quarantine is about 14 days. So, that's my point is that we're at least 14 days.
So, if the, they didn't all get quarantined at the same time?
We had a large number of the quarantining happening this week with the number of...
But there's a whole lot of people that are quarantined at different times.
That's true. And to your point, we're not saying this is going to go away. We're saying that we're having a hard time being able to meet the staffing needs based on what we're looking at right now. And knowing that down the road, it's not going to get any better, that's, that's where we're presenting you with this data so that we can have some conversation.
And so, the conversation would be then, let's just not go back to school until next fall. You know, I, where do we, where do we call the objectivity in what we're doing? Do we just say, "Okay, well, our kids were out in March. They've already been out since March, April, May, June, July, September, Octa..." They've already been out that far. And so, now do we say, "Well, you know what? Let's just call '20 and '20, '21, and we'll go back in the fall of 20, '21." I, I just think that we have to be able to work this out in a better way, in a more effective way for the best interest of the students, their educational process, their socialization process, and what parents have be, have become to count on in our country as being able, when in two-income families, to be able to provide care for their children and education for their children in, in the middle of their lives and what they're doing with them. I, I just think it's, it's too eas, it's too easy to say, "Let's shut it down."
Madam Chair.
Mr. Talber?
I, I have to admit that I'm very frustrated here because we're supposedly in the midst of a pandemic, and we're asked to make a decision, not necessarily based on the number of COVID cases in our community because right now it stands at 17. But, but it's based on this quarantine policy that we have that basically keeps our students and our staff out. And until we have Ms. Davies in here to address the quarantine issue, like Mr. Hess says, we're going to be back in the same situation under that quarantine policy. And so, I'd like to call her in and ask her how we, how we take a look at this quarantine problem and see how we can revise it. But we're...
But she can't, she can't revise it. She's following the state guidelines.
It's, it's not, there are other counties in North Carolina that are following different policies. I want to hear it from her, that she's actually following the po, I want to see the policies. I know the CDC policy says what it says, six feet, 15 minutes. That's not what the, that's not what she's invoking in us. She's pulling in everybody within that classroom, whether they're six feet or not, for 15 minutes and saying, "You got to quarantine." That's going to put us in a situation over and over again where we might as well shut the schools down. I want to call her in. I want to, I want to question her on that policy and see if we can't get it revised by her.
In the meantime, we have staffing issues. We can't, the kids are not safe in school.
I know we have staffing issues, but we're asked to make a decision based on, on somebody up there making a decision about these quarantine issues.
We have to look at what we're doing in virtual right now, too, because it's impossible for a teacher to have 178 students. I mean, that's not, we're not providing the excellent, effective education that Dare County prides itself on. So, that has to be addressed in some way.
This is Margaret Lawler.
Margaret.
I'm virtual, and it's very interesting just listening. And I have to agree with Bee that it's not fair to some, for us to expect some teachers to have over 50, 50 to 100 students, and then some of them have smaller classes. This isn't fair to the teachers, and it's not fair to our students for short-changing education. I've had a lot of calls from parents, mainly elementary, who are ready to pull their kids because of all this going on. We have a teacher, we have to address...
Now.
Margaret, I'm not sure if we lost you or if you just quit talking. It's kind of sketchy.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I'm finished.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, I don't disagree that you, Mary Ellen Balance, I don't disagree that we need maybe to have Sheila to give us more clarification or see if we can't work through some issues to make this a little bit better. But I think we are, we're, I think we're at a complete breaking point right now. And if we don't do something, I think we're going to have, we're going to have a lot bigger problems on our hands.
Yeah, I don't mind Sheila, this is David Twitty. I don't mind Dr. Davies coming, but she's going to give the same presentation she gave us two months ago.
I know. That's right.
I mean, it's the same piece of paper. Nothing's changed.
And nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed in her, in her world.
In fact, if anything, it's got, like, this Mandy, Mandy Cohen came out today and, and was...
I don't remember her talking about the quarantine issue.
Yeah, she did. She talked about quarantine. She said that they would be quarantined.
Yeah, I mean, and, and explain the whole details to us. I didn't like it then, I don't like it now, but...
But she's following state mandated guidance.
That's the state's, which, also, Joe, I agree with you. How the other counties are doing it, it blows me, too. But you know what? I don't live in the other counties. I live in Dare. And this is where we've got to worry about our students and staff in Dare and follow the guidelines with that, and let's make it best for, for our students and staff.
As Harvey has, I, I don't think that we're any less qualified than the other counties that are continuing to do this and/or other schools in North Carolina and other places contingent to us, Virginia and South Carolina and other places like that. I don't, I don't think that we're any less, the word is not intelligent. I, I, I just don't, I just, I don't think we're any less capable of making a decision that, or decisions that would allow us to keep our students in school. And under, you know, under exigent circumstances, you know what? People have to step up. And whether it's the teachers, whether it's the parents, whether it's the central office, whether it's the school board, people have hard decisions to make and things to look at to make their lives go on in a regular and normal basis. And I think we have the capability of doing that. It doesn't mean it's going to be easy.
No, but he's, he's telling us that they, we don't, we don't have the substitutes. We don't have the staff when they have to be quarantined like this. And if we weren't quarantined like this, how, what's to say we wouldn't have 50 cases? We don't know that either because we don't have that crystal ball.
But you don't know that you're going to have five, either.
But, but right now, we know we're 24% in the hole for teachers, and that's putting stress and anxiety and all kinds of other things on not just the teachers, but the students and the parents. There's stress and anxiety, no matter how you slice it. We're in a situation we've never been in.
Yeah, but you're going to put, put yourself in a situation where you've got stress and anxiety on one side or stress and anxiety on the other side.
Right.
So, you're either going to have it on a negative side or a positive side.
But if we put it all on virtual, if we go back to remote, then we have the ability to consistently and effectively deliver instruction.
No, I, I disagree with that 100%. It's that I do not believe that virtual learning or remote learning in any way, shape, or form, as a teacher that taught for a quarter of a century, I do not believe that virtual or remote teaching, learning has any measures in any way or shape up to in-class learning.
Right, but you don't have subs to put in the classroom, that, like, they're being taught by subs or they're being taught by...
Not every day.
Almost.
It's, it's a moving, it's a moving target.
I'd just like to say one thing. One, there was one statement before talked about maybe shutting down the whole year. No one's considering that, I don't think. That's not so. I don't want anyone to hear that and get concerned about it. I think we need to eat this elephant a little bit at a time. And my concern is, is that if we're waiting to try to get some more data, we're going to end up having our hand forced anyhow to go to virtual. Correct. So, it, it appears to me that we still need to try to deal with what we're dealing with right now. This is the mountain we got to get over right now.
Agreed.
And, and that to get to, with the next quarter in January...
January 18, it ends, I believe.
And because we don't know what's going to go on with therapeutics, we don't know what's going on. We don't know what lies ahead, but we do know what we're looking at right now.
Right now, yes.
And that if anything, that would allow some period for people to regroup and have something that they could count on. Because I'm concerned that the kids, my granddaughter, she loved going back to school. She brightened up just like a little flower. But to come in and come out all the time, I think is detrimental.
It is very, Mrs. Bee, and it's very detrimental, very disruptive for the, for the school because today it's, it's a kindergarten class, tomorrow it might be a third grade class. It's going to be a moving target, and we don't know. It's going to be constant, and there's no stability for our students and, and their educations if we keep yoying them back and forth.
This is Farley. Part of my job is to advocate for the 1,000 employees in Dare County schools who are and have been stepping up on a daily basis. And have been doing so, they do it on a regular basis. I've been in education 28 years, and I've seen a lot of teachers. And if you're not doing your job, I'm not going a bat for you. But I have 1,000 employees that are putting on the line every single day. They'd run, run through a wall for kids. We've got a myriad of teachers are going home, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, weekends. We're asking them to do more than they've ever had to do before. We've got teachers who don't have planning periods because they're teaching extra, and they don't have to. We've got teachers who are teaching remote and face-to-face at the same time. We've got virtual numbers off the charts. And this is not an employee effectiveness or performance issue because we do have the best teachers in the state of North Carolina in this district. And more importantly, they have integrity, they're committed, and so are the leaders throughout the school system, and we see it on a daily basis. And I'll tell you, I've got 37 administrators. Many have not taken a day off in a, a year and a half and are working 18 hours a day. So, this is not an effectiveness issue, it's not an effort issue because we have got employees who go way above and beyond. So, you know, part of my job is advocacy and defending great employees who our community loves. And so, I can assure you that there's, there's no drop-off in performance or commitment, zero.
No, there isn't any. This is Bee. I spoke with a special education teacher yesterday. She's teaching face-to-face, she's teaching virtually, she's teaching remotely. And she said, "Bee, I just, I can't take it anymore. It's just too much at this point." And I'm afraid that's the sentiment that we're seeing in our teachers today.
Madam Chair, this is David Twitty. I'll make a motion that we go back to remote learning except for having our special needs students to go into the classroom with what Dr. Farley presented with his team, along with athletics and the band. I'll take that motion on the floor.
Can I add to your motion, possibly?
What's that?
That, amend the motion, I'm sorry.
What is it?
That they return to remote learning to the end of this semester.
Correct. End of semester, I would agree with that.
Effective immediately.
Well, let's give, let's give them some time that Dr. Farley presented to us Monday and Tuesday. Is that correct, Dr. Farley? Getting things prepared and going in, is that Wednesday we're looking at? Or is that still on the table for Thursday?
The scenario I was asked to present, we'd have workdays on Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday workdays, so we could be remote learning on Wednesday...
Yes, sir.
Through the end of first semester.
Wednesday was picking up Chromebooks, wasn't it?
Yeah, we were going to pick up Chromebooks at some point.
Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday. And then that will go through January 18th as in the first semester.
There is a motion on the floor for Mr. Twitty to return to, and you were saying...
Remote learning.
For pre-K through 12?
Pre-K through 12, except for our special need children. And also, let's see what we can do with athletics and the band staying in what Dr. Farley presented us tonight.
And would that motion include any other extracurricular activities other than band? And we have...
What we presented was the extracurricular activities such as band and clubs and athletics that are after school, we would propose still continue.
Okay, so you would include that part in your motion?
I would include that, yeah.
Second.
So, a motion for Mr. Twitty and a second for Ms. Balance. Is there any further discussion?
Harvey Hess, I disagree with the motion. I believe that if we're going to go down this road, I think that there's at least a way to go in both directions. I would amend that motion if the board so desires. There's a motion on the floor. We can vote up or down, but I'm telling, I'll, I'll make another motion after that. If we vote on it, I'll make another motion that we rescind that motion. So, we'll go, we'll go, we'll go either way. That... That, that we one hundred percent keep our EC students face-to-face. This is part of amending that motion.
That's in the motion.
He said completely remote.
No, he included the EC students.
Special needs is
Special needs.
Okay, all right.
The students in the extended content standards.
Extended content, yes. Not all EC.
Then I would also say that, that elementary school students, K, K through five, continue on face-to-face, five days a week. And so, let's see, how do I set, set this motion?
Well, I think we are, have a motion on the floor with a second.
Well, you've got a motion, but you've got a motion on the floor and you've got a second, but it doesn't mean that we can't amend that.
If you go to second, you can. I don't think yours is
I think you can amend, you can amend that for a second.
Mr. Shaw. Is Brian on? Would you, can you clarify for us, please? That there's a motion and a second on the floor. Can that motion be changed?
Yes, there would be to amend.
Yes.
And to amend the second, and it
Can you get him a little, on there a little more clearly?
I don't know if this helps at all.
It does. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor, the second.
Yes.
That, the, the motion that's on the floor could be amended by another motion, which would need a second. That would be a motion to amend.
Okay.
Okay.
Then you vote, you discuss, and then you vote on the motion to amend to see if the original motion should be amended. And if the motion to amend passes, then you have a new main motion. If the motion to amend fails, then you vote on the original motion.
Okay, so you're, are you making a motion to amend the original?
I am making a motion to amend the original motion. And the amendment is that our K through five students continue five days a week, face-to-face instruction continuously.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's a question on that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
My question would be to Dr. Farley.
Is, on Harvey's motion, do we have the staff to do this?
Yep, forty-six percent of Manio Elementary.
No.
Well, we, we've shared, we've shared the staffing concerns, so I can't predict what happens
Right.
based on fluid nature of the situation.
But right now, we know we've got forty-six percent of Manio Elementary School out.
Right. We don't have staff.
So there is a motion to amend the original motion. Is there a second for that motion? The motion dies for lack of a second. So we go back to the original motion that was made by Mr. Twitty with a second by Ms. Balance. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none. I'm going to do a roll call vote. And we will start with
B, before you ask, before you do that, so that was K through five.
The original motion is K through, is pre-K through, pre-K through twelve.
Okay, I'm good then.
That's the original motion. Okay. So I'm asked for a roll call vote. We'll start with you, Ms. Lawler.
Yes.
Mr. Talber?
Aye.
Mr. Twitty?
Aye.
Mr. Hess?
No.
Mr. Hester?
Aye.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
And B Bassnight votes yes. So the motion carries on a six, one vote.
Based upon that vote, we would ask the board to approve an amended calendar that makes Monday and Tuesday of the coming week, the sixteenth and seventeenth. Workdays in December first would be a instructional day.
Madam Chair, I make a motion for that to take place, Monday and Tuesday be workdays, and December the first be class day.
Margaret Lawler, second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Twitty to accept the calendar recommendations of Mr. Farley, Dr. Farley, excuse me, and a second by Ms. Lawler, correct? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Ms. Lawler, I'm asking a roll call vote.
She said aye.
Aye. Mr. Talber?
Aye.
Mr. Twitty?
Aye.
Mr. Hess? Not voting. Mr. Hester?
Aye.
Ms. Balance?
Aye.
And B Bassnight, aye. Motion carries with one abstention. Is that correct? Which counts as a yes vote, I believe. Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before the board?
No, but I would like
I would just like to
Okay. Go ahead, Margaret.
Dr. Farley, the staff, and all the teachers for all the dedication and hard work.
I second that. B Bassnight seconding that. And Ms. Balance, you want to say something?
And I also would like to thank the teachers and not just the office staff, the administrators, the principals, the data managers that have a long weekend ahead of them, that our thoughts are with you, and we appreciate all that you do for our staff and students. And if there's anything we can do to help, please reach out.
And this is B Bassnight. I would like to thank all the parents and community members who have been listening to this meeting. I, I know there are people who have opinions on both sides, going back and, and going back to remote, or staying face-to-face and going to remote. And I do feel like this board has made the decision that we feel is best for our, the education of our students and the well-being of our teachers. And so I, I thank all of you for understanding that and know that we do thank you for your cooperation, your partnership as home teachers. And to our teachers and our staff, Dr. Farley, Ms. Kinsel, all of you who have worked day and night to navigate these waters, we so appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion we adjourn for tonight.
A motion by Mr. Twitty and a second by Mr. Talber. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. We're going to
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much.